Good morning, everyone. It is May fourteenth at eight AM. Now called order the Freetown Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting is being recorded and available on our town's YouTube page. Because we're doing this meeting virtually, we're going to read the notice now.
Good morning. So this meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Haley signed into law chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to open meeting law to March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Freetown Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found in the town of Freetown's website. Freetown MA dot gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the Zoom website and hit join and entering the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is not available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technology means. In that event, that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Well, I think that's it.
Thank you, Debbie. All right, so media, meeting agenda. Item number one, discussion and vote to open add, remove articles to the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for six three, two thousand and twenty-four. So do we want to go through each one? Or just list the ones that are
So you just, so you need to make a motion to open it and then I'm gonna, and I'm gonna tell you which ones have been added, which ones have I, I don't remember. I think I removed one. And then so you guys can discuss them, but just open, you have to open the town meeting warrant so we can discuss them.
All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to open the town meetings warrant for six three, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion made.
I will second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectman Math, I'm sorry, Selectman Zager.
All right, so we'll let Debbie take it.
Yeah, so you know, we have been working diligently on trying to get the warrant out the door. One of the things that I know last time we had add some more articles, one that I forgot. I'm gonna go to the special town meeting first, one that I forgot to have you look, you know, specifically approve was one for the, and this one I need you to give me a specific vote. Paul State with the Water Commissioners had requested a capital budget item of seventy-five thousand dollars for fire hydrants. Repairs. I did not put it in the capital budget of the omnibus. Because it is, they do have an enterprise fund, right? They're independent sort of in their own little budget. I rather drafted a warrant article which they have seen and they're going to approve the warrant article. The, the, the question here is where do we pay the seventy-five thousand dollars out of? They wanted out of the, you know, the, the free cash, the tax levy. Because they said that war, the hydrant service, the fire department, which services the entire town. Well, there's been some other discussion with accounting and they think it should come out of the water enterprise fund. I don't have. I can see both sides of that, right? There isn't a ton of reserves funds in, in the water enterprise fund and we're working on that grant, which is the other article where we're allocating money from them for the grant. I spoke with town council, they said it's a policy decision. In other words, it's a selectmen's decision. Do you want it to come out of general funds? Do you want it to come out of water enterprise? But the water commissioners feel strongly that this is a townwide. You know, use because the firemen fill up their fire trucks with the, with the hydrants and it's, it's to repair hydrants. Unfortunately, they get run over and hit by cars and if, if we don't have and if someone doesn't stop, make a report, we don't get the insurance money and these things cost seven, eight thousand dollars to repair. And I guess there's quite a few of them that need to be repaired. So I guess on the, this, this warrant article, first I need you to say, I, I guess the way it's written, it's coming out of the general fund. So I guess the first decision will be, are you okay with that? Or would you switch back and say you want it to come out of the water enterprise fund?
So what, one thing is obviously, do they have enough money in there to even take for both? Because I know that the grants that we're gonna get are gonna be repaid, but to your point, we have to pull it from there first, right? That was a discussion had. The last meeting was is we need to take the money from there and then we would put it back at a later date. I actually agree with the water commissioners on this that it's hydrants are all over town, but the fire department is pulling from, for them from all over town. So I think it's more of a town issue than a, a water department issue. I, Carlos, I mean, you you can chime in on this and
No, I agree. You know, I, I know, like we've done in the past, we pull from our general funds and then we get grants to kind of get the money back. Sounds like that's what's gonna, might happen here. But I agree with you, Jared, man with the water commission and, and everybody. It is a townwide issue and we need to fund us the correct way. My cur, I am curious as well, what is in the enterprise fund? What's the remaining funds and what other projects are they gonna be using it for, right? It seems cleaner to me to do it out of general funds, which I hate doing, but it, it is a required need for the town, right?
Yeah, so the, the mapping was what the the first part we were talking about. And that was what we had talked about at the last meeting was we have to pull and I forget the dollar amount, so I don't want to hack it. But there was a dollar amount that needed to be pulled from there.
Yeah, that's
And then we were gonna get repaid.
Yeah, that one is the two hundred and five thousand, four hundred, which I do believe you've seen that article, just, it's just allocated. And that's from the water sewer enterprise funded, so, and they, they are amenable to that. And again, if you look at the article, they wrote an for that second article, they wrote a detailed description basically saying hundred and twenty-three thousand is gonna be reimbursed, the rest will be offset with in-kind services and there is a cash piece, it's a forty-six thousand dollar cash piece. And we may I, I've discussed possibly pulling opera funds for that. I just wouldn't, you know, I'm in the process of compiling everybody's requests for opera. And I'll be presenting a spreadsheet to the board at a later date and you can all decide how you want to spend the remaining opera money between the varying projects from all departments and as well as if there's any that you, you, the selectmen would like. So if you're, if, if the, the decision is you, it'll come out of the general fund, the article is written is fine. So you would just have to vote to add that article and recommend it if that's what you're inclined to do.
Where are we at on that one? Because I'm trying to find it in the
Article three, this is special time.
Yep.
Article three.
Okay. So Carlos, any, any other feelings or anything on that?
I can read it to you if you can't find it.
No, I have it here. It, I, I can read it. To see if the town will appropriate and transfer from available funds to sum of seventy-five thousand dollars for the maintenance of the water and sewer infrastructure hydrants, valves and piping to serve the community, including any incidentally related costs and or take action relative to there too. It's, it's one of those things, it's we, we can't fight fire without water, so it, it's I, I think the cleanest way to do it is to approve this article moving forward and then hopefully ARPA funds can then I don't know, move money around down the road.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I just think that that, to your point is the cleanest way, so.
I mean, and people can, I mean, the town meeting can vote no, I just, I don't foresee that, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
And this is from the special town meeting. I'm proposing we take it out of free cash. So it'll be available to them as soon as it gets voted at town meeting if it's approved. So that's part of your, that's why it's part of your special. As well as the mapping and sewer article. Because I need that letter allocating those funds before June thirtieth for that grant, advocate, you know, not for the application, for the grant itself to to, to get the monies. So I don't believe I propose anything else to the special town meeting. There's only four articles. It's the elementary, the repairs of the elementary school and the, the fire station. So those, if you want to make a motion that you're all set with them, that whole town meeting warrant should be ready to go.
So with that, I will entertain a motion that we approve special town meeting warrant.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
I'm in trouble with that this morning, sorry.
All right, so.
The annual town meeting.
Yeah.
So I added this article from the last time you've seen it, and this is the reason for this meeting today. Article three on the annual town meeting is funding for the union contracts for the Freetown Firefighters Union. We were able to reach an agreement with the union last week or what, whatever. And I just actually, as we working, the union has approved the the proposed contract changes. So now the selectmen need to approve, which I don't, I think that might be on this agenda. You're gonna need to approve their uni- union MOA as well and when we have the first year of the union contract, we put the article on town meeting warrant saying how much it's gonna cost for the first year, which is ninety-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars. So this article funding that first year of the union, you know, the increase is on the it's article three of the annual town meeting. Do you want me to read it, Jared?
I can read it now. I, I got it. Thank you. All right, so it's article three, funding for union contracts for Freetown Firefighters Union to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of ninety-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars. To fund and implement the first cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freetown and Freetown Firefighters Union Local Three Two One Three, covering the period from July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. And as on file with the town clerk and or take any actions relative there to submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, I don't need to read all that, but so.
Yeah, so I don't know if we wanna approve this contingent upon you proving the MOA. Or we, you know, I know that's on the agenda, we would just be taking it sort of I don't know where it is.
So.
It's the next one on the agenda. I don't know if you want to approve that first and then come back to this because
Yeah, yeah, I think that sounds cleaner, because then we need that before we would want to add it.
Yeah. So I don't know if you looked at that MOA.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, you know, hats off to, to you guys in, in the fire department for, you know, getting that done in a timely manner and
I don't know how timely it was, but everybody, everybody put in put in a lot of effort to get it here, because otherwise we're doing retroactive pays and to try to do the firefighters retroactively with all of their, you know, the little nuances is a lot of work. So this is it, it was a great effort by everybody because it would have, it's a little bit of work to do it the other way. Not, not impossible, we do it all the time, but it's just a little bit of extra work. So I'm make, I'm happy this has moved forward. So as of July one, they, they seamlessly get their increases and everybody can keep working and fighting fires.
I agree.
And taking care of our residents with the ambulance service. So yeah, if you want to just vote on that MOA.
Sure. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the MOA between full-time firefighters association in the town of Freetown for seven, one, twenty, twenty-four through six, thirty, twenty, twenty-seven.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes. And then I will go back and I will entertain a motion, oh, should I read the article again?
I think you're good.
Okay, so with that, I want to attain a motion to approve article three, funding for the union contracts for the Freetown Firefighters Union for ninety-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes. All right, so then.
We've got some, I just, I and, and forgive me because we, you know, the warrant evolves and it's a process. So I want to make sure that all of the articles, I, I'm not sure you saw article eight, which is the fund, the purchase of the ambulance. I was waiting for the omnibus budget to sort of be finalized to see if this is something that we could do with this town meeting or not. At the end, we are able to fund the purchase of a new ambulance. So I'm, I believe, I'm not sure this was on the last warrant that you reviewed. So that's article eight, fund the purchase of an ambulance. It just says to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase and equip a new ambulance, including any related or incidental costs and expenses and or take any other action relative thereto. This was a request by the fire chief. As a capital request, I pulled it out because I wasn't sure we could fund it. And I think it's probably more appropriate to be on the town meeting for, because it's a large, a large number. We've talked about this, right? The last ambulance that we just got was three hundred and eighty-four thousand and now this is with inflation and it will take us probably almost three, four months to get the ambulance, so I just want to make sure that that's approved and, you know, that the board has approved that.
Yeah, um, you know, to your point, I think you nailed it all, Debbie, right? It's not gonna get any cheaper. It's stuff that we've talked about. We have the money, so let's you know, let's do it. We're gonna need it. So, and they're doing more runs than ever, so they're putting more mileage on and stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right, anything for Carlos, any?
No, we talked about this in depth. You're right, it's just getting more expensive and it's gonna take a while to get the ambulance. And if we can get it locked in at this price now, we'll save money down the road, purchasing that ambulance, let's say a year or two from now. So if we have the money and it's, it's, it's not gonna hurt us down the road. Well, it won't, it will be less painful now than later. So let's, let's put it that way. That now's the time to do it.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve article eight. Fund the purchase of an ambulance for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
So the other article I added was article thirteen. It's a standard article. It's to fund the actuarial report we have to do to do the OPEB study. We have to do it every other year as, as required by accounting principles. So I don't know. I, I somehow I, I missed it on the first go around. So this is article thirteen, the post-employment benefits study. It's for seventy-two hundred dollars. I'll read it to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum of seven thousand, two hundred dollars for the purpose of updating a two-year actuarial, other post-employment benefit study and or take any other action relative thereto.
So, to your point, it's straightforward. It needs to be done. It's not a lot of money, so I this is a question.
Going forward, I'm probably gonna put this in the treasurer's budget. I just didn't and so here it is. Because it has to be done. It's not a
Yeah.
option.
You're good, Carlos.
Yeah, so this is we're gonna be compliant and this is the way to do it. So it, it is what it is. This is an easy one.
Right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve article thirteen, other post-employment benefits. OPEB, OPEB study for seventy-two hundred dollars.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
And the last change to the articles is article twenty-two, which is establish and fund Freetown Elementary School Maintenance Stabilization Fund. We have talked about this because we get the rental income from the elementary school and it's gonna automatically go on the stabilization fund to be used for maintenance on the elementary school, which is the town's responsibility. But this now adds an element of funding it. The FinCom voted to fund it with sixty thousand dollars, which is the amount of our annual rent, by the way. So I talked to Matt, we have the money in the budget. So this, this piece of it adding the sixty thousand dollar funding piece is new. So just, I'll read it to you. You've seen the article, but now it adds a funding piece to it. To see if the town will vote to establish a Freetown Elementary School Maintenance Stabilization Fund pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Section forty, Section five B and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Section five B and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation, a hundred percent of the rental fees received from use of school property. And further, to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum of sixty thousand dollars into said Freetown Elementary School Maintenance Stabilization Fund and or take any action relative thereto. So that's the change in this one, so I just need an approval on that and, and the rental receipts have been sixty thousand dollars a year. I know that contract was up for negotiation. I've spoken to Superintendent Strauss and he seemed to think that the, that would stay the same every year at this. Yeah, I don't know if it's been finalized at this point.
I, I think this is a extremely good thing to do. I mean, that, that building's not getting any younger and, you know, we know what already about how the, you know, the condition of the roof and you know, there's other things that they are going to need in, you know, few years' time. So this will be the cleanest way to, to pull the money.
Yeah, I mean, I think our goals will be maybe if we have free cash in the fall, then that's something that we would look at saying, hey, do we want to put some free cash into the stabilization fund to be used at a later date? Because we do know that roof is coming. So I, 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 yeah, I think it's good. Happy about this.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And it's the money, the money is being made by the school. Right? So it's, it's just a good way to, to do it, rather than just to let it go into general funds seems kind of wonky, so.
Right, we, and, and you never know when it's gonna stop. So I always worry about taking non-tax levy income and spending it on tax levy sort of expenses, if you will, operational expenses. Because what if it stops and we've now we've spent that sixty thousand dollars in our operating budget, we have to find a way to replace that if, you know, so this, this is a, a more responsible way, I think, to invest the money back into the school, which you know is gonna need, need stuff. So.
Hey, Carlos, any comments, concerns?
No, this is a phenomenal idea, you know, kudos to, and a special thank you to both Greg Goodwin and Carl Bizarra, Building Commissioner. And of course Greg is the custodial manager for the entire school district. Getting these projects on, on a list so that we are aware of them to make sure that these are getting done in a timely manner. Because you're right, Jared, the, the school's not getting any younger and we know the condition of the roof. Roof goes, we know how that goes, right? Everything rolls downhill in a sense. So giving back, putting it back to the school makes the complete, complete most sense. So great article.
Yeah, no, I agree. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve article twenty-two, establish and fund Freetown Elementary School Maintenance Stabilization Fund.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops.
Yes.
Selectmen Zager.
Yes.
So those are the articles that have been changed. I do, I do want some clarification. Article fifteen. Uh, transferring funds to conservation land. I know we had discussed this, the thirty thousand dollars. I think at that meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to take no position. But at, at the last meeting, they voted to recommend all the articles. So I need a clarification if we are recommending this or you're taking no position, if you, if you can recall. This, this is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be added to the Conservation Land Fund established under Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight C, and or take any action relative there too. They're just looking for some money to put in their coffers in case a piece of land comes up that they want to buy.
I mean, it's a small amount of money, but I, I guess so. Here's the thing, it's, we're just saying, okay, we wanna we want to beef up an account just in case, but does it really make sense? Do we need to put that money into that account? If we don't know, if we had something and said, hey, this piece of land's going to be available or is available, we want to buy it.
Right, I think that.
What would be the, the benefit of them having the money in their account versus having to come to us for it? Would it change any kind of voting?
I don't believe conservation. I should have, I, I don't believe they have to go to town meeting like we do. In other words, I think they can buy a piece of land without getting town meeting approval. So if they have the money in there, and I, I just, I don't I need to vet this information because I'm not a hundred percent sure. But ma- and maybe I'm wrong on that, but the money would be, I guess the thing would be that they could, they would have the money available to them and they know what they could do. I don't know where the benefit is. I think that Trevor's comment was to let the, you know, let the townspeople vote. And I'm okay with that, but I just do, are you gonna recommend it or just take no position, which is what we, we believe the vote was originally. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, so it, in the explanation of the article, one of the things it says, these funds represent the average amount collected from rollback taxes from FY nineteen through FY twenty-three, so assuming that's all the, the tax rollbacks that they have to pay back for pulling stuff out of sixty-one A, right? And all that stuff.
Yeah, so that's what we've been doing. And when we have a rollback, we, they've been coming to town meeting asking for the rollback to be given, to be put in their coffers and that's been approved. This year there weren't any rollbacks and I, so I guess they're feeling a little like, wow, we're not get, we're not getting any money this year because there aren't any rollbacks. But next year there could be half a million dollars in rollbacks. You don't know, right? I, I, I don't know. None of us know. As land come, you know, we don't know when it comes out of chapter land. So, uh, yeah. That's this one.
So I guess the, the other avenue of looking at this is then it gives them a cleaner idea of, to your point, this year there's nothing, next year there's a half a million per se, you know, whatever, but they don't know what they're gonna get sometimes till you know, I guess this will give them an idea to know that they have thirty thousand dollars each year to spend and it kind of looks clean. But if five years in a row, they don't get anything back, and that's probably being a little too much. But if they had nothing, then it would mean theoretically, we're not getting paid back and we've just spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, yeah, I, I, Carlos, how do you feel about this?
I, I'm right there with you, Jared. It's playing the what-if card is, is, is tough, right? We don't know what they're gonna get here from every year after year and in my opinion, I think we take no position on this. At the, at the town, like Trevor's point at the last meeting, one of the last meetings, let the town vote on it, but for, for us to kind of weigh in on it. You're right, right? Deb's right. We, we don't know, and you're right, we don't know what's coming in next year. It could, it could be half a million or more. It could be triple that, who knows? Now we've allocated funds. Can we take it out if we do allocate them? Can we, we ask for it back?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, so.
I, I mean, I think you could take no, I mean, you could take, you could say you don't recommend it.
I don't know that I, I, I see, I see both sides of the coin, so I don't want to say, I, I, me personally, I don't want to say I don't recommend it. I, I, I stand with Trevor and let the townspeople decide because I see both sides of the coin, so I, I really don't take a position, I guess.
Right, same here. I, I, to me, conservation means we're saving land, we're saving, where, you know, nothing's getting developed on it, we're, we're, we're keeping it green, keeping the trees alive. It's a great, it's a great great program, right? Great committee, whatever it is, right? But I don't think I take a position on that. Like you, I, I could see both sides of it, right? I can see the financial side, I can see the environmental side. But at the same time, I I look at the money and I'd rather hold on to it and let it accrue interest versus and put it into the hyperbowl, say, hey, this, we might need it. Then we might get more money next year, so I yeah. It's a tough one, but I, I take the position on it.
So I guess to your point is, and I don't want to drag this on all day on you, but you know, if that money's coming in, it's because someone's buying a piece of land and theoretically is going to develop it. Right? So we're taking away land, wooded land, so So we want to do what we can to preserve some land in this town and keep it, you know, feeling the way it is. So um yeah, I but all right, so uh I think we're both on the same page. So I'm just going to say, I entertain a motion um to take no position on Article fifteen, transferring funds into Conservation Fund.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes.
So the the other clarification, obviously, we got that petition article. Article twenty-one. Again, I just want to clarify that that's not being recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Uh because I just want to, we voted to recommend all the articles. I think we voted to kind of recommend to put all the articles on the warrant because we have to with the petition. But this one has not recommended by the Board of Selectmen. I just want to solidify that that is what you want.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, because of the way it came in by petition, we have to put it on there word for word, right? But we don't really know what this means. So I I have a hard time taking a position on something that I can't get behind. So um I think we were all very clear about that. So.
I concur with that.
So you just want to ratify that the board takes uh not is not recommending the petition article?
Yes, so uh with that, I entertain a motion that um article, we do, we take while we do not recommend Article twenty-one petition uh map two-ten lot seventy-eight relinquish claim request.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor? Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes.
And the last thing that I need clarification on is Article two, the highway severe salary. As you know, there's a little bit of um discrepancy there. Um I don't know that we've vo- voted particular salaries. Highways fairs asked for a five percent raise, as you you've heard at the budget meetings. The FinCom is recommending a two and a half percent raise. Um this this article states that you recommend what he asked for, which is a five percent raise. I just want to make sure that's how you want this one to be published.
Yeah, um I I'm okay with it. I I think uh we have someone that's really good and I know what what the finance committee, I know their angle and I I um I don't disagree with them, but I I want to do what I can to keep a very valued employee in town. So uh I'm actually okay with giving him the five percent when you think of the cost of living. And I know this can the problem is, is we give for one and not the other, then it's, you know, but for it. And I don't think he's gonna have a hard time getting it either, so.
Right, at the end of the day, he's an elected official, so he's townspeople are gonna vote on it. But at the same time, you know, following the FinCom, looking at all different negotiations we've done for unions and everything else, everyone's getting a little bit less. Five percent, does that set a precedent? That's my concern is, right? Is everyone gonna come back saying, hey, I want five percent too? And I know that's a little bit different because he's elected versus others that are either on a contract or union employees. Trying to keep it fair for everybody. Do I think he's a valued employee? Absolutely. He he always answers all the townspeople's calls, uh whether it's a phone call, Facebook page or or some call in the office. But it is five percent versus when everyone else is getting in gen- general two to three percent, right? So I kind of agree with the finance committee. It's a tough one. At the end of the day, the townspeople are gonna vote the way they're gonna want to vote. Uh so I guess the question is, do we vote as is? Is that what we're asking, Deb? Or do we?
And and I I just, it's, yeah, he, I mean, I, you know, he he's gonna go in front of the townspeople. And I do believe when he tells you he's gonna get what he asked for. I believe that to be true. Chuck does a great job and
Yeah.
people, people uh respect that. Um I just need to know what the board is recommending to the townspeople. And I just don't know if this was clear in prior, and maybe when I can jump in in prior um meetings. That you were recommending everything as requested. And maybe that was the prior vote. I don't know.
Yeah, I can't remember. Uh but you you know, looking at it, it's a little bit of a jump, right? From looking at previous voted on twenty-twenty-four and was going up quite a bit. I don't know, uh it's I like to be fair across the board. It's a tough one. But I agree, he does a good job. I think the townspeople uh will voice their opinion. If they want it, they'll say yes. If they don't want it, they'll say no.
Yeah, I I I at the end of the day, I don't, I don't know whether your recommendation's gonna weigh
Right.
Another, but I just need to do my job.
Yeah, no, I you're absolutely correct, Debbie. It it's it's, I I don't think our vote, yay or nay, is gonna impact really with the votes gonna be on that one. So.
I think it was in there originally, so it's written as recommended by the board. If if you okay with that, then that's all I have on the articles. We can just move those vote to move the annual town meeting warrant forward as written.
All right, so um you want me to to do it as written and then we're gonna have to vote to close it after that, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, you can vote to approve the annual town meeting as written. And you can vote and close it at the same time, doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to um approve the annual town meeting as town annual, I'm sorry, I got someone with a barking dog outside you. It's driving me insane. So I I will entertain a motion uh to approve the annual town meeting warrant as written for uh June third, twenty-twenty-four, and then close. Actually, I should leave that out first. I'm sorry. I'm hacking this now. I I entertain a motion to approve the warrant for the annual town meeting as written.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes.
TA Patty, I have a quick question, though.
Yeah.
Um I think we had some um zoning or something that came off yesterday. Do we have to do anything with that?
Oh, oh, yes. Um I don't know that we have to do anything, but I want to tell them, yes. I think that there was a zoning articles relating to the accessory apartment. The bylaw for the accessory apartment. The um mockups that came back from town council were just too extensive for me to cur- you know, work on. And the planning department, because they weren't having a timely meeting, couldn't really make the changes. So I requested them to remove them from the town meeting and they up, they were okay with that. And those will come back on in the fall town meeting. So yes, I I'm sorry. Thanks, the wind. I for I forgot to tell you that we removed that. And then the other one, I'm not sure, there was a bylaw uh uh an article requesting thirty thousand dollars for online permitting for planning board that has been moved into the omnibus budget. So it's not gone away. It's just got moved into the budget um line. And that's gone to um everybody and the FinCom. So yes, I did remove those articles. Any issues with that removal of those articles?
No, no, and we did approve it as written, right? So we should.
Yeah, you should be good. I just, I just, the way I'm just gonna make sure you, we're all on the same page and I didn't.
No, and I appreciate that.
We've been
Yes, thank you.
Sort of tweaking this. Get it to out to the people.
Mm-hmm, yeah, i- i- and it kind of cleans it up as well for the town meeting because people are gonna be concerned about the three A stuff.
I I think so too. I think it's too much almost at one meeting. I think we're gonna have a a lot of conversations surrounding the MBTA zoning. And so I think it I think it it's a good decision. Unfortunately, you know, they do a lot of work to get them to this point because they have to have public hearings and whatnot. So we always want to keep them on if possible, but there was just a lot of, there was a lot of stuff and um
Yeah.
I I think this will be best too. And I'm thankful that uh Victoria agreed and talked to her uh chairman of her board, and they were okay with removing it um from this, from the annual town meeting. And the wind's already put it on the falls, special town meeting. So we'll make sure we go back with them and get that ready to go for the next town meeting. So you want to just vote to close that one and be done with it and get it out?
Mm-hmm. So and so I entertain a motion to finalize and close the annual town meeting um special town meeting warrants for six-three twenty-twenty-four.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. All right, so um with that, we're gonna go on to um item number four, discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and straight line fencing for replacement of fence at Hathaway Park. So yeah, I think it seems like it's there. I'm just trying to open it up so I can see the amount.
Yeah, it was a little money.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't much.
You approved the, to award the contract to them at the last meeting.
Yeah, so this is just approval for the the contract. I got you. So so yeah, I know it obviously needs to be done. We don't need to talk about this too much. I don't think so. You have anything else?
No, uh this is an easy one. This is just the fencing along the water and everything else. So people are aware of what we're talking about. Um needs to be replaced. It's updated, it's fallen down, it's rusted. Time to move on.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so what was that, Debbie? I'm sorry.
As I say, and Chuck Chuck's actually gonna remove the existing fence. So he made this a little bit more affordable for the town. Half the work.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chuck. So um with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and straight line fencing for replacement of fence at Hathaway Park.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. All right, agenda item number five, discussion and vote on whether to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement between the town of Freetown and straight line fencing for the replacement of the fence at Hathaway Park. Uh it doesn't get any more straightforward than this. Obviously, that is our fearless leader and one capable of signing it, so.
That's right. Congrats, Deb.
All right, so um with that, I entertain a motion to approve um well, I just lost it. Uh the town administrator to sign the agreement between the town of Freetown and straight line fencing for the replacement of the fence at Hathaway Park.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. Agenda item number six, discussion and vote on whether to approve the contract amendment number one with the environmental partners for a sonnet sewer extension, design and permitting to pay with available ARPA funds.
So this is the sewer line engineering contract that we currently have. Of course, we ran into the trouble with the the uh South Main Street into North Main Street, where we don't know where the road is. We don't have the um old property lines, so we have to kind of recreate that, and that'll be coming forth. So that costs extra money. And we also needed to do some surveying on one of the lots we're taking for tax title up on Alexandra to put the pump station there. That wasn't included in the original contract. So these are two add-ons that we need to finish that engineering. Um so this is sort of a twofold, right? First, it's to approve the contract amendment, but it's also then to allow me to apply to ARPA funds to get it paid for. So that's two pieces of it. So I just kind of wrapped it all into one because I need approval from the select board to go forward to apply for ARPA funds. But as you know, Bristol County ARPA can be only majorly used for water sewer, broadband, things like that. So I'll apply for the additional funding through through that.
All right, um is now, is that the only pump station that we need? Or are we still gonna need one closer to the town hall as well?
So there is one um for being proposed for the where the where the red building is, to knock the red building down and put the pump station there. Um we're in the process of that right now with the sewer water commissioner and the uh sewer committee. Because that is in the floodplain, so the pump station now, they're talking, needs to be built into like a concrete building that's like waterproof, watertight, or up on a platform, right? Which will be horrendously unsightly. Um so at the last meeting, we discussed, we better talk to Mary Brown and the Historical Commission before uh doing too much. So E- Environmental Partner sent an email to Mary Brown saying they wanted to discuss it. So she's already talked to me. We we need to really spend some time on that because it's 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 the historic center of uh this district here. So I think we're gonna end up having to do almost a replica building and put the pump station in that building. But we're just talking, I don't even know if that's a possibility, but that's something we have to, we have to discuss because we can't put this eyesight this this terrible thing right in the center of a Sonnet Historic District.
Yeah, I agree.
When we're taking down one of, you know, the building is is indefinite in repair. It has to come down. It's it's getting to that point where it needs to come down soon. But we don't want to replace it with an eyesore. So that is in the middle of conversations. Just beginning. So again, we'll be circling back with Mary and the Historical Commission to whatever goes there should be approved by them on some level. So.
All right, so I'll take the first part, Carlos, unless you have, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off if you have anything.
No, no, I'm on the sewer, I was at the meeting, sewer line commission meeting, so uh well aware of the pros and cons of each uh decision. Especially when it comes to the historic uh area. We don't want to replace one eyesore with another eyesore. So it's a, it's a balancing act right now. So I'm glad the Historic Society has uh joined the conversation for their input and then uh um helping us moving forward with that, with that project.
All right, so I will, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment amount um between town of Freetown and environmental partners for uh fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars?
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. So Debbie, what was the the second part of that vote? I apologize.
To to use um ARPA, available ARPA funds, which I just don't want to be tied to Bristol County. I just, I I either, you know, whichever ARPA
Or yeah.
I can get it out of.
Makes sense. And we got it, you know, we get it while we can, right? We know that we have to allocate the funding by certain times and
Bristol County, they want it allocated by June. Uh federal is by December of this year.
Yeah, so let's let's not let that money go back into something else where, you know, we have a use for it. So um with that, I will entertain a motion um to fund this through ARPA funds.
Motion made.
Yeah, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. All right, um agenda item number seven, discussion and vote on whether to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract amendment number one with environmental partners for the a sonnet sewer extension design and permitting. So same thing as a couple of things before, obviously, she's she's in the know, she knows what she's doing. So there's obviously no issue with Debbie signing on this.
That's right. Congrats again, Deb.
So um with that, I entertain a motion um to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract amendment number one with environmental partners for sewer, a sonnet sewer extension design and permitting.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. So that's all we have for today because obviously we're remote, so we can't sign anything. So anyone have anything else before? I'm good?
Hmm, no, you'll stop in tomorrow to sign the warrant?
Yes. Yep. And so, all right, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Suckman Loops?
Yes.
Suckman Zager.
Yes. I hope everyone has a great day.
To you as well, Jared. You too, Deb. I'll see you guys in a little bit.
All right, bye.
Bye.